We just have to build what suits the needs of our community, to build a welcoming diverse community and to provide housing for, as I said, across people's lifetimes and across the income spectrum. Because that's the kind of community I want to live in. So what I consider immoral, objectionable is that someone could face eviction for sleeping in a bedroom.
Hello Boulder and the wider world. This is the Sharing Boulder Podcast. My name is Philip O'Grain and for episode 15, I spoke with Steve Rosenbloom in my backyard to discuss his candidacy for Boulder City Council. But before we get started, I have several times in recent episodes mentioned the fact that 85% of the city of Boulder is zoned for single family houses. This is a convenient fact for me, given how much I enjoy talking about zoning reform and the affordable housing shortage in Boulder. But unfortunately, it is badly inaccurate. This was recently brought to my attention and I had intended to issue this apology independent of the fact that Steve brought it up in our interview when he told me that the correct number is 35%. I've read elsewhere that it is something more like 40% of the city. Now, in my defense, I assumed that the 85% figure was relative to residentially zoned land, not the entire city. I have seen estimates that this number is between 60 and 70%. So whether it is 35 to 40% of the entire city, or 60 to 70% of the residential areas, which may or may not be a useful distinction, it is significantly less than the 85% number I have used. I apologize for my carelessness. Rest assured, our entire fact checking team was summarily fired without severance pay because we care about facts and want to get them right. Please reach out to me on Twitter with concerns about incorrect facts mentioned on this podcast, or any other comments you might have. My handle is at PV O'Grain. Technical note, just before we started discussing bedrooms are for people, I took my lapel mic off to set up a light to improve the video quality. We discussed bedrooms are for people for several minutes before I realized I had not put it back on. I did my best to recover the audio during that section of the interview, but it's a little choppy. I have made no secret that I am excited about the four candidates endorsed by the Boulder Coalition, and I am honored that they came on the podcast. I encourage you to go listen to those episodes if you haven't already. While I cannot pretend to not be a biased and opinionated podcaster, I have invited all of the city council candidates onto the podcast, and I'm committed to engaging in thoughtful and respectful dialogue with whoever comes onto the show. So I want to extend my gratitude to David Takahashi and Steve Rosenbloom for also participating in the podcast, and I hope you find these episodes to be informative and interesting as well. Steve came over to my house on the evening of the same Friday on which he and his legal team served campaign-related cease and desist order letters to people I respect and admire. I want to acknowledge this elephant in the room and say that for the purposes of this podcast episode, we politely ignored it. I trust and hope that this issue can be sorted out in good faith between the affected parties, or if necessary, through the legal system. I do not think any commentary from me on this issue would be well informed or productive. Steve is a formidable conversation partner, and we sparred and brainstormed and explained and explored for over three hours as we compared and contrasted our ideas about how to address a wide variety of issues that Boulder faces. I appreciate Steve's tenacious approach to problem solving, his depth of knowledge of the issues, his attention to relevant facts and experiences, his independent streak, and his love for Boulder. My brain was buzzing long after our conversation ended, and I appreciate the way he challenged many of my ideas and assumptions. I've never been quite so tempted on this podcast to play the role of quote, "Monday morning quarterback" by adding commentary on things I might have said differently, or open threads that I might have circled back on. Such is the nature of unrehearsed conversation. But I won't embellish any further this already very long intro to our longest yet episode. We hope you enjoyed this conversation with Steve Rosenbloom.
Steve, welcome to Sharing Boulder. Thanks so much for taking time out of your busy week. Go ahead and introduce yourself. Tell us why you're running for city council.
Cool. Thank you so much for inviting me. So my name's Steve Rosenbloom. I'm running for city council because I believe there's so much progress to be made in this town if we just start talking to each other. So I want to have the conversation. And that's what I've been doing in my campaign, talking to a lot of people who don't usually talk to each other. And I've discovered that we have the same values and just little tweaks at the margin, and as opposed to scaremongering and disagreeing, figure out where we agree and move forward. And I believe I can do that.
That's great. So the name of this podcast is Sharing Boulder, and I've, in the last episode, I started off what I'd like to be maybe a tradition, we'll see how it works out. But just to start off by asking, how would you make Boulder, or what should Boulder do to become more inclusive?
Yeah. So there's, there's two ways. Affordability, across the spectrum, housing affordability, and then just cost of living, which we needed to address through making sure all of our comprehensive policies don't have a disparate impact on the people who are struggling in Boulder. So we need to balance our climate goals, building codes, how we pay for stuff to make sure it's equitable. The other is cultural. I moved here from, from New York, and people here are, I would say, very enlightened about certain things and sort of not enlightened about other things. And the more we can elevate the conversation and build empathy for people who aren't like, who don't look like you, don't talk like you, come from different backgrounds, that's how we're going to move forward. And there's plenty of ways to do that. I mean, government can be a leader, the arts can be a leader. I think people here do a lot to try to educate themselves. And so it's, we just got to bring the culture along.
Yeah, we have, I feel like in Boulder, we have a lot of inclusive sensibilities, and we sort of kind of fall down when the rubber hits the road in terms of actually bringing people in that have diverse backgrounds. So I appreciate, appreciate your answer there. Well, so one of the things I wanted to kick off with is, one of the, one of the candidates, I don't remember who it was, it might have been Matt Benjamin, said that one of the things he loves about politics in Boulder is that we, we all agree on what the problems are. Like, we were talking before, and it's like, yeah, housing and homeless problem, and we actually didn't get around to talking about transportation. But we have, we, I think we have a lot of agreement that, and that's, that just seems true of a lot of the candidates, that like, we all know what the, we all know what the problems are. Like, it just feels great that we're not like worrying about whether or not COVID is a conspiracy theory, or like, I mean, all the kinds of things that are bogging down other city council meetings right, right now around the country. So I don't know if you have a comment about that. It wasn't really a question.
Oh, I, I do. I find it incredibly frustrating, and that's part of what motivated me to do it. Cause I feel like, yeah, we agree on the problems, we agree where we need to go. But you would think that it's Alabama versus California or something. I don't know who's who. But we need to change the dialogue. I know there's been attempts before. There's a group dialogue, Boulder's trying to improve it. But just, just, just talk to each other, bring people to the table, and focus on the, focus on your, the values and the goals rather than trying to, trying to win. And I think Rachel Friend at a, at a recent city council meeting, she implored everyone to, hey, every decision, let's stop framing it as a win or lose. Right? It's, we're not playing a board game here. We're trying to beat the other person, right? We're trying to build a community and move us forward.
So most, most board games are zero sum games, right?
Yes, exactly.
Unlike this community, which I think has so much room for positive growth for lots of people. So
I agree.
Cool. Well, so along, along those lines though, one of the things that, that, so I feel like I've only been paying attention really to local politics the last few years. Like, I lived in Boulder for like 10 years, just sort of like, you know, not paying attention to city council. You know, like, I never went to a city council meeting, for example, or understood how the planning board worked. And in 2017, I remember thinking, you know, I've got some opinions about some of this stuff. Maybe I should pay attention to who's running for city council. And it was very frustrating for me to go to everyone's websites and, and see that everyone was saying basically the same thing, like from, like kind of an uninformed, but I feel like somewhat educated oxymoron. But, but like, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out who the different people were, because they were all saying the same thing. So that, that's, that's one thing that's interesting to me about you. Like, I, I don't know much about you yet. I've been, I interviewed the four candidates that are endorsed by the Boulder Coalition. And so when I, when I went and listened to your kickoff speech and heard the other people who got up and said nice things about you, it sort of feels like, gosh, you're saying all the things that these other four candidates are saying. So maybe like, to, to you, what is sort of most salient about how you're a different candidate than, and maybe, maybe, maybe you have so many agreements, that it's not the right question to ask, but.
So I think if you listen to, to one person who spoke at my, city council person who spoke at my kickoff event, he said, in every election, there are candidates who say, and there are candidates who do. And Steve is, is most strongly in the do category. So I think you started off mentioning that you started getting interested because of Trump.
Yeah, sure.
Paying attention, I think that, so if there's one positive about him, it caused a lot of people to pay attention. But I've been doing. So I've been in housing and finance for my whole career. And, you know, people have read about housing policy. I've lived and breathed it. So I've done the work both at a national level and a local level to deeply dig into what's, what can we do better? What's causing these problems? What are the federal, state, and local regulations that need to be, that need to be changed to unlock better outcomes? So I think that's the biggest differentiator. I'm also a numbers guy. So when people say in front of planning board, or city council, that they want this, or they want that, they don't understand fully what that desire translates to in terms of increasing housing costs, or decreasing the feasibility, or constraining housing supply. And I understand those things because I'm experienced, I'm also an economist. The other big distinction between me and the candidates you've spoken to is, you know, like I said, I'm in for solutions and not slogans. And I hear a lot of slogans specifically on two critical issues that I think are going to determine this election and determine the near term future of Boulder. So this election in particular, I don't think there's a lot of disagreement between what we need to do on housing and transportation and climate. I'm going to get to 100% green energy as fast as possible. I'm going to look to build the housing, redevelop the housing, preserve the housing that Boulder needs to build that welcoming community, and build a safer, more convenient, climate-friendly transportation network. However, I do not want to defund the Boulder Police Department. I do not want to overturn the camping ban. Those are bad slogans, and even worse policy, that have been, ever since it came up last summer, rejected by every single election across the United States. We just had the, the mayor election in New York City, where the person who won was a former police officer who promised to keep people safe by getting more police officers on the streets. The number one well-established result in criminology research is more cops on the streets saves lives, protects neighborhoods, especially more vulnerable neighborhoods. I am absolutely for police reform, police accountability, but I'm not for bigotry or demonization of police officers or unhoused people. So we've already lost 42 officers out of a strength of force of 183. So we've already tried defunding the police, and we saw what happens. On the, on the separate issue of homelessness, I don't think it's compassionate to abandon people who desperately need our help, who are either struggling with mental health issues, substance abuse problems. We need to connect with people and give them a path to a better life. And that's not what I'm hearing from the other candidates. So I think we have some pretty, pretty strong areas of disagreement there.
Yeah, well, homelessness, the homeless issue is, is one of these issues I feel like I'm still learning a lot about as I go. We, we interviewed Jen Livovich on the show recently, and I thought that was a really interesting conversation. One of the things that, that came out of that for me that I hadn't thought about before was when you put a homeless person into an apartment, it's disorienting for them. They've just lost the community that they, that they were a part of, and now they're isolated from that. And
For some, I don't want to overgeneralize because, so I'll give you my background. So I've been focused on national housing issues, but when I, I like to do things where I can make a real difference. So before I even started for city council a couple of years ago, I decided I want to really understand this issue. So, and understand the constraints that people face and why it's so difficult. So I, I went and found this dilapidated slum building in Denver that was full of health code violations and basically being used as a drug house. It's going to be condemned. I partnered with the Denver Office of Economic Development to refurbish it and build safe, quality, basically market rate standard housing. And I went to the Colorado Coalition for the homeless to provide housing for elderly, disabled, and formerly unhoused people. And sure, maybe some of them who have been living unhoused for a while felt that, but many of them started crying when they saw their name on the mailbox.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to somehow implicitly endorse that providing them housing was, was
No, no, just, just, yes, there are some folks who it's, it's, can be disorienting for, but for, I would say for most folks, it saves their life.
Yeah, right, right. No, to me, it makes sense to, to provide like a lot more housing for, for that population. So like, and in Boulder, I feel like, you know, the housing ladder, if you want to use that metaphor, it's probably a horrible metaphor, but I feel like the bottom several rungs have been kicked out, you know, so that it, it's difficult for someone on the street to actually do that for themselves, to, to get housing for themselves. So, yeah, maybe, maybe just tell me, like, can, can you maybe just step me through like a positive vision of like, how you would tackle homelessness in Boulder?
Sure. So when you say that it's difficult for someone to resolve for themselves, so I never like to overgeneralize. So as a
For sure.
As a, everyone is unique and everyone is, has their own unique challenges and needs to be met with the right resources. So we spend across city and county about $100 million a year on housing and human services, either directly or via funding the 20 different nonprofits we have for, for different needs.
And that's, that's totally separate from any police budget or?
No, just housing and human services.
Yeah, right.
This is separate from police and, and
Well, cause homelessness, you know, because, because it is a police issue.
It shouldn't be. So I, I am fully supportive of, police should be addressing crimes. They should be trying to figure out the bike theft and car theft rings, the importation of meth and fentanyl, not interacting with homeless people. And we should be having social workers and mental health professionals, whatever, whatever people need to connect them with services. Totally separate issue. With, back to, back to homelessness and housing insecurity, I think we have
Well, you, you made the connection to the police kicking, kicking off this conversation, right? Like
No, no. So
Okay.
I said there are two issues where I strongly disagree with the candidates you spoke with before.
I see, yeah.
We have a crime problem.
Yeah.
The property crime is up between 25 and 250%, depending on the offense. There's been, you know, if you look at total crime, it's flat because the amount of crimes against society like alcohol crimes or drug abuse crimes, they're way down because essentially we're not going after them or prosecuting them. But property crime and certain assaults are up an uncomfortable amount, and it's a worrisome trend. So
But, but I assume like, I mean, isn't there a connection between homelessness and the crime rate? I mean, I feel like there's, you know, people who have substance abuse problems are almost certainly looking for cash to buy whatever they need that day, right? And so they're committing crimes? I mean, so teasing them apart seems strange to me.
Want to strongly push back against, because I think that's what's going on in the community is that people are associating housing insecurity and homelessness with crime. There is absolutely a nexus, but of the many people struggling with high housing costs, or whatever's going on in their life, there's about 5% of them who are committing crimes. But those 5% are responsible for the majority of what's called type one crimes in our community. So that's why we need to treat everyone as an individual and not, not scapegoat the unhoused, unhoused community because of the actions of a few. So back to what can we do? We're already doing a lot, and I think that we can always do better and spend, spend what we, spend what we spend more efficiently, more effectively, and more creatively to reach people. So you mentioned people who, so in this country, the bottom 20% of the income distribution can't afford housing anywhere in any county, in any county and state in the country. And that's for two reasons. One is because we have an income problem. We've, we've passed 30 years, the bottom quarter, bottom 20% of the income distribution has not come pace with inflation, and we've had big relative price shifts in our economy because of productivity. So the iPhones and cars have gotten a lot cheaper, entertainment's gotten a lot cheaper. But the three sectors of the economy which have had no productivity growth are education, healthcare, and construction. So part of the increase in housing, housing costs are due to low interest rates and land prices going up. But a big part is construction costs. So what are the three things that are the fundamentals of a middle-class life? Getting the education, providing solid healthcare, a place to live. So we're struggling with that. So the, we've got, got federal programs to, to fill in some of those gaps. Take a step back. We've decided that in this country, healthcare is a human right. We have Medicaid. Say what you want about the strength of our healthcare system, but education's a human right. Food's a human right. You know, TNAF and SNAP, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance. And, but housing, we have declared a human right. So we, we fund 40 billion a year of HUD housing vouchers and various programs. That's only enough to cover one fifth of every person who would otherwise qualify for it. So for another $200 billion a year, we would effectively end homelessness as we know it, or housing insecurity as we know it. In the three and a half trillion dollar budget proposed by the Biden administration, there's a lot of creative stuff to both enable more affordable housing and provide more housing opportunity to folks. So we'll see what happens there.
I think that's great. I, you know, I sort of think about it simplistically in terms of supply and demand. And when people start talking about increasing wages in the context of housing, like, there's lots of good reasons to increase people's wages, but I feel like, you know, it's one of these policies, I feel like we have a lot of policies to increase demand for housing. And, and like increased wages in isolation feels like something that increases demand, which, you know, when you, when you look at that supply-demand curve, like, you're pushing prices up for housing. And it seems like, you know, like, there always needs to be discussion about the supply side. So the fact that the Biden plan is trying to address that is encouraging to me. Anyways, yeah.
Sure. So, so I think that's to say that there's, there's two distinct housing crises in this country. One is what we just spoke about, is that the bottom 20% can't afford anywhere, right? And that's an income problem. Then there's a supply, supply problem in certain parts of the country.
High-tech centers.
Coastal centers where because of many different things, primarily trade deals and the software eating the world, and the agglomeration effects of these tech centers, you know, all of the industries that want to move to Boston, New York, California, Seattle, right? And many cities in the Rust Belt Midwest are well below their peak populations. The housing there is very affordable. They are tearing down housing and tearing up infrastructure. So we are, bad national and regional economic policy is forcing people to relocate to places like Phoenix and the Sun Belt where it's not very climate friendly. They're going to use air conditioning all the time, and they're going to run out of water. So yes, we, don't, let's not confuse the kind of, the problems of housing under, undersupply we've been dealing with for the past decade in the aftermath of the financial crisis with some poor economic policy that's causing these big regional migration shifts. So there's affordable housing to be had in many parts of the country, but the jobs aren't there. So I think we need as a nation to, to make sure we have equitable growth across the country, which will go a long way to heal our politics as well.
Yeah, well, I mean, thinking about just Boulder as a, as a microcosm, you can't, for one thing. I mean, like, basically what you were just saying is like, there's all these national and regional trends that are going on that, you know, affect Boulder's housing market. And there's a lot of people interested in coming to Colorado, and Boulder's very attractive inside of Colorado. And so there's very, very high demand. But I feel like that's like half the story, right? Like, we've, we have basically had very stagnant supply in Boulder for, for, you know, decades. We've had a lot of
That's not true.
That's not true.
No, people threw, so another thing that
I feel like the zoning hasn't meaningfully changed in, in recent memory.
So we have the Danish Plan, which restricts single-family residence permits to 1% a year, but that doesn't apply to multifamily. So do you know how many houses, I mean, how many residences we've, we've constructed over the past decade?
I don't. How many?
3,000.
3,000.
So
Is that 8%? Something like that?
So it was about 40,000, 3,000? Yeah, about 8, 9%, right? But if you would have talked to those other four candidates, you would think it's zero, right? So I like to talk in real facts. And could we do more? Could we do better? Yes. So what happened over that, over that past decade when we built 3,000 housing units? What happened to the vacancy rate? Went from 2% to 6%. We have the highest vacancy rate in any, in any city in Boulder County. Yet prices went up. We can't divorce prices here from the national trends where especially over COVID, people are fleeing from cities, work from home, desirable places are going to go up. But it means we're doing something wrong. When we increase supply, prices go up and vacancy goes up. What we're doing wrong is we're building the wrong, wrong kind of housing. We have 60,000 in commuters. And what do they say? They, they say they would pay more and accept less to give up their commute and live in Boulder, but not in a micro unit, not in a one bedroom. Because people want to have a dog, people want to have kids.
Of those 3,000 units, how many of those are, are like the kind that you're talking about?
Majority.
Okay, more than, more than 50%?
More than 50%. Because so
But not like 95%?
I think about 70%. Not micro units, but one bedrooms, two bedrooms. So Boulder Housing Partners, you know, since we started the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and Community Benefit, we have now 6,500 units of deed restricted affordable housing rentals, about 250 deed restricted ownership in the ownership program. So not that money. So Boulder Housing Partners runs two programs because of the different tax credits you get with what's called LIHTC. And that's, that's the primary financing mechanism to build
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. And we get the equity from either cash and lieu, from the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, or from direct funding from the city, from property taxes. And like I said before we started, Boulder Housing Partners is, I think, the premier, best, most well-run, best executed, most well-managed housing authority in the country. And I've, have experienced a lot of them. So with the, there's two programs, one for 30% of people making less than 30% of area median income, and one for people making 60% of, less than 30, 60% of area median income. There is insatiable demand for the 30%. There is insatiable demand for the thirty percent. But we're nearing the, nearing the saturation point of the sixty percent. And they have seven more projects in the pipeline. So what that means is, you know, someone, if, if you were to take a market rating. Compare a market rate rental with an affordable rental where you have to do income certification and go through the administrative burden. You'd much rather take even for a little bit more money, the market rate. So. And for the city-funded projects, if you make, if your income grows above that sixty percent. Let's say you start out, you're, you're starting your career, your income grows, or you decide to, um, you have a partner, you wanna start a family. You either get kicked out or you never qualify. So. And then where do they go? That gap between the sixty percent of AMI and a single thing, exactly. So. And it's not like San Francisco where people need to drive three hours. Here people can drive twenty, twenty-five minutes to find a place they can afford that's attractive to them. So, but what we're doing is we're accommodating. National investor demand to build student housing. They, they look for private equity firms and local investors. They wanna build housing where they're gonna have parents sign a year in advance on the lease. Have zero vacancies because the students recycle every year, have zero evictions because people are moving out every year. So that's just a goldmine for investors. So that's what they wanna build here, but it's not serving our community. You know, CU needs to build housing. We shouldn't use our, our precious land that's available to, to accommodate their refusal to build adequate housing for their students.
What's the narrative that you would give for why CU is failing to build the housing that they need to, to serve their students?
The same reason they are pushing student debt on their students. They're, they're cost constrained. So. We've, as a, states across the country have. Cut budgets to education and they've, they've. Put, put some of that burden on the students and via debt and put some of that on, under investing in, in, in. In plant facilities. So they have.
I have, I have a disconnect here because. Institutions wanna come in and make a bunch of money on these very same students that somehow CU would lose money? Or it would, it would be extra expense for them?
The capital cost to build it. And also they.
Because they don't have access to capitalists are the, sort of the reason.
Well, they also don't wanna spend the money when they can push the burden on the students. So they, they get a lot of out-of-state students who are.
Or, or to me, it seems like the problem can be solved by. Private equity or whatever. I'm not saying that that's the right thing.
Also there's, CU has a ton of land on, on East Arapaho. They've got a ton of substandard apartment, seventies apartments that aren't very dense along the creek. They should be doing something about that.
I, that's what I was gonna ask you next, because I, I used to live at Thirty and Colorado when I was in grad school. And at the time I lived there, they talked about taking those things down and doing something else with it. And they're still there. I don't see any sign that they're, that they're going anywhere, but, but they're not very. I mean, there's all kinds of reasons, problems with those, those housing. Except the location is wonderful, the, the community is, is lovely, uh, but.
There could be a lot more housing there, a lot better housing.
A lot more housing and a lot better housing. So if, um, if CU wants to build a bunch of housing there, can the city get in the way?
CU is sovereign, they can do whatever they want.
And so they, yeah, to me, it seems like.
I, I'm not, I'm not on the Board of Regents. I don't know. I disagree with what they're doing, but you know, I'm running for city council, not the Regents of CU.
I don't mean to put you on the defensive with what CU is doing, but, uh, it, it is, it is curious to me. Well, thanks for explaining that. I'm trying to, I feel like we've got four or five loose threads plus, plus a bunch of subjects we haven't.
You take me wherever you wanna go.
Yeah, right. Well, I do want to, um, I feel like we're right on the edge of talking about, uh, bedrooms are for people. Because this issue of institutions coming in and, and. Building, building housing for students. And I, I didn't, I didn't even summarize what you said earlier very well, but I, I have this other thread that I wanted to just push on just for a minute before we go there. And that is. My vision of where I would like to live is not this single-family house on a, on a large yard. We rent this place and we're, we're constantly thinking about what we want, where we want to be next.
This is pretty nice.
It's pretty nice, but, um, it's not for me. I, I, I want to live in a place where, um, I don't need a car, that where pedestrians are first-class citizens. Cyclists are close seconds and third, in, in cars, you have to, you have to park somewhere on the periphery. I'd like to live in Cyclocraft, if you've ever heard of that magical place. Uh, but anyways, it's a, it's a thought exercise. It's not a real place. And. I would like to have like downtown be an entire pedestrian district where we park our cars somewhere on the periphery. And, and we walk everywhere and there's a lot of place for families to live and for young professionals, all, all kinds of people to live. And. I feel like even this neighborhood could be totally transformed because we're, we're just, um, two miles from CU. We're walking distance to the. To the grocery store, but it's not a neighborhood that's designed for walking. It's, it's just, it just happens to be close to places. But it's completely handed over to cars. We've got so much parking, so much asphalt, gigantic yards that are never used. As far as I can tell, I never see people back here. And so I would just love to reconfigure a lot of these places that are close to downtown. For car light, carbon, carbon light living. And so my question to you is, does that appeal to you? And, and can we, can we make some zoning changes to allow neighborhoods like this one to be? To look a lot different?
So you may not like living here, but a lot of people do.
For sure.
Right? So I would leave it to people in this neighborhood to decide what they want. So the, the vision that you're. You're putting forth. You know, it, it's people are looking to Europe about what a great walkable communal neighborhood. So my, my wife is, uh, her. Family's from Cuba, but originally from Spain. And after the revolution, a lot of them went back to Spain. So we haven't gone for COVID, but we go to Spain every, every summer to stay with the family. And people live in very small apartments. They don't really do entertaining at their homes. Every, every, you know, you don't see any cars, having a car is a pain in the butt. And if you have one, it's gotta be a tiny car. And people live very socially, walk everywhere, and it's wonderful.
That sounds amazing.
But. Cities are built. On the prevalent transportation technology at the time. When all these European cities are built that everyone here loves to point to, it was before the internal combustion engine.
For sure.
Right? So they had to, they had to somehow fit the internal combustion in there somehow. All these places, most places in America were, were built for and subsidized by. The car companies, the tire companies, the asphalt companies, all that stuff. So. How do we transition, right? And how we bring people along? That's the question.
Cause I feel like, you know, a major key to the climate crisis is getting out of our cars and, and living in, in neighborhoods that don't require them.
Yep, you're correct. I agree. So for me, it's a question of what smart policies can we pass to. Bring people along and show people the vision. And with the proper on transportation, carrots and sticks. Don't just beat people, lead people along with how great it's gonna be. And what I, what I envision is. Before you can say, um, hey, we're gonna change your neighborhood, right? Which just scares people.
For sure. It's, it's like.
Let's build great new neighborhoods. Right? We, we have, we have a lot, a lot of asphalt in this town. We've got a lot of underutilized land that strip malls and shopping centers. Built in the seventies and eighties that are not the highest. Yes, um, where that can be the vision for the future and we can, we can spend the money. To build these great, you know, fifteen-minute neighborhoods where you can live, work, play, all that stuff. And. People who are living in these sorts of places where they have to get in their car are gonna be jealous. So that's, that's kind of my. And, and where I, where I, what I think is. Is doable. And gonna make the most change and not gonna, you know, get people's hackles up and.
Uh, rephrase it. I see the wonderful stuff in Holiday Neighborhood and I'm jealous. So I want change. So I'm trying to put myself in the category of the hypothetical person you just mentioned. So what, what can I do to like have that?
Yeah. So the, the problem with Holiday, everyone loves it, it just took too long. And the reason it took too long is because. People weren't talking to each other and we have, I'm the first one to admit, we have a Byzantine. You know, comp plan, site review, all, all these processes. And let's not. You know, denigrate. The wonderful planning that created this town and made it so desirable, created the open space, created all these thoughtful things that. Make everyone wanna live here. So let's not tear that apart. Let's just make it better. But I, I, I think we need to agree where we need to go and get there. Not battle over every single development because we haven't agreed on the vision. I think we can agree on the vision. And then streamline the process to bring forward. So with Holiday, it doesn't take ten, twenty years, the next holiday.
Well, the next holiday could be Alpine Balsam. So how do you feel about Alpine Balsam as a site for a fifteen-minute neighborhood?
It's a wonderful site for a fifteen-minute neighborhood. I question whether we should be locating. We need to do something about our city facilities. There's some in the floodplain, they're not energy efficient buildings, but the fact of the matter is that. I think it was like eighty, eighty-five percent of people, uh, of city employees commute in from outside of the town. We need to fix that by building more housing, more rural housing, but. Why concentrate all those people into a place where we're trying to build a lot of housing, right? And when instead we could have. A community center, an art center, a nonprofit center, which would benefit and enhance this community.
So that doesn't seem like, oh, I, I'm confused now. So, so you wouldn't.
So just to be clear, Alpine Balsam is gonna be a wonderful, mixed. Diverse housing mix. But then the reason they bought it is because they wanna locate all of these different city offices, which are spread throughout the city into that one location. As a centralized service center. So the people are gonna be, um, city employees and everyone going to get their building permits or whatever is gonna be driving to that part of town. And, you know, everyone's always concerned about parking and traffic.
About that aspect of it. I, I, when I think about Alpine Balsam, I think about the proposals for putting a bunch of housing in there. So.
Yeah. So we're losing housing because we're putting city offices there, even though what we've learned from COVID. Is that people work very efficiently and prefer, prefer it and don't commute into town because now they can work from home. So I'd rather see a cultural arts center. I'd rather see nonprofits. I'd rather see more retail. I'd rather see more housing than consolidating all our city offices there.
I see. Yeah. Okay. So, um, yeah, when I said Alpine Balsam, I have this fantasy in my brain that. Uh, the, the proposals are for a lot more housing in fifteen-minute neighborhoods there, but, but you're telling me that is that. Consolidating the city offices.
Oh, no, no, they're gonna do housing, but a, a big portion of that. So the original, the county wanted to move in there also. And we talked them out of it, but now just the city. I think we should, we should.
You can see why, uh, every development project, you know, everyone has different opinions about what it should be.
Well, this is unique because the city bought it. You know, and that's, that's why they, they, it's good.
So, so sorry, let, let's just start over with this question. What would you do with the Alpine Balsam? Area, maybe you just answered that, but sorry.
Yeah, I would, uh, the, the track we were going down, I think, um, some, some. Family housing, uh, along the park, gradually going up to Broadway where the speeds are faster and it's more appropriate to have higher density. Some great retail on the bottom. Great retail on the park side. Love to see a coffee shop and ice cream pop serve people in the park. I love the fact that they're gonna be cutting up that huge block and making paseos, adding more walkability. Yeah, it's looking.
That sounds great.
Yeah. But, uh, we're gonna get needlessly, I don't know, seven hundred, a thousand car trips in there for people trying to. You know, drive their cars in from far away to do city business, which I think we should move city business online. And we should have more neighborhood amenities if we, if we're gonna make this into a, add a lot of people.
Something I always say that I, I, I think, I think one of the things that's gotta give, if we're gonna add people to our city is we have to remove cars because. You know, having meaningfully full quantities of housing like in that, in that area. Seems like, you know, but just don't put a lot of parking there. I mean, that, wouldn't that eliminate a lot of trips?
No, because if we're gonna locate city off, city offices there, people are not gonna, they have to drive there and they gotta park and they'd be parking an ideal parking lot.
There's just not enough incentive to, to get them to, to take the bus or public transit.
We don't have, we don't have a sufficient public transit system, which is another thing, whole separate conversation.
Yeah, another chicken and egg thing too.
But on the, uh, the parking, I mean. I, uh, we also don't have the efficient high-speed rail that I, I take when I go to Spain. Let's not kid ourselves. Yes, people can spend the majority of their time and their daily trips. Working, shopping in their fifteen-minute neighborhoods, but everyone's gonna have a car to go to their mountains to have their adventures. That's why we've moved to Colorado. So. Let's be, let's be realistic about, um, people having cars. We can have less cars. We can share cars. But, uh, yeah, they don't, they don't belong downtown. They don't take priority over bicyclists or pedestrian safety. Um, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not scared to make things a little more inconvenient or more expensive, um, to get people out of their cars and doing the right thing by climate. And building a better community, but I, I'm not, uh, not gonna shame people for having a car because.
No, I, it's, it's not about, for me, it's not about that. It's just like, I just feel like there ought to be a lot more opportunities for people to live without a car. In Boulder, you know, and.
We can, we can get that done.
So, um, I think like just, just kind of one practical. Aspect of that is like, you know, we're, we're also concerned about affordable housing. Well, one thing that makes housing really expensive is making room for all the cars. And so. To me, I would love to have an option where, um, I could buy something for a lot cheaper if I say I'm not gonna have a car, you know.
So if you commit not to having a car?
Either commit to it or just like, I'm not able to.
So it's two different things, right? If, if, I think one of the interesting things at Alpine Balsam, and they discussed, I don't know if they took it up, was. If people said, oh, I'm not gonna have a car. And yeah, you, that you can, developer can get benefits if, if you put those restrictions on it, but then, because the problem is if we. If the chicken and egg problem, if people can't actually live without a car, because we don't have the public transit system. Or people wanna have a car because they wanna drive to their adventures. And we build five hundred units and. All the city office space and point seven parking spaces per unit and each unit's gonna have two cars. What's gonna happen is what I observed in New York was neighbors getting into fistfights over parking. Right? So. Carrots and sticks, back to that. And, and you gotta make sure you're, you're. At the same time, you're, um, building the housing, you're building the transit. So that you manage these, these tensions. Cause they, that's one thing, parking, um, it's a tension that needs to be managed, right?
For sure. Yeah. All right. Well, thanks for indulging me on that one. I, like I said, I, I hope that we can add people and remove cars, cause that's, to me, it feels like. To, to meaningfully address the climate, we need to change our way of life. We also like, and, and just to piggyback on my own fantasies here about. How cool I think Boulder could be, uh, is, you know, the, the more we live in pro-social. Environments that are, you know, kind of the, the, the neighborhoods you described in Spain. If we could figure out how to make those work here and make those attractive, like we have so much. We have so much need for better communities and better, the better mental health that goes with that. You know, you mentioned education and healthcare and food. And mental health feels like it needs to be on that list because we're just failing our, every, you know, society is just, seems like it's, it's.
It's been a tough couple of years, but even, even beyond that.
All right. So let's, um, let's move over to bedrooms are for people. So I'm a volunteer.
I would just have to stick on this for one moment. You know. I think this is a great place and people complain about it. And there's one thing to complain, it's expensive, right? And. I want more people to be able to enjoy this. High quality of life we have here. And that's my focus. But I think if you want something else. There's other places to move to, right? So.
Well, not in North America typically. I mean, there's not a lot of walkable neighborhoods in North America that aren't expensive.
Well, they're, they're, they're not expensive or don't offer a terrible quality of life, right? So there's something, let's not idle, like what city in, uh, in North America, actually, I'm gonna leave aside Toronto.
I was gonna say, maybe we should.
In the United States, in the United States. So cities. Typically have. Much worse. Socioeconomic mobility, especially for people start at the bottom, much worse educational outcomes, much worse health outcomes. Much worse crime, much worse budgets. So they're doing something wrong. So we gotta figure out how to do it better. The one thing that they do do better, which we. The one thing that they do do better, which we can emulate, is they have a much lower carbon footprint. Right? Because they live lighter, they use mass transit, all that stuff. So I want to emulate that, but not all the other failed policies.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a big bag of worms right there.
Yeah, show me the example in America that you want to make this place more like it's, you know?
Yeah, no, that's why we always look to Europe for inspiration, right? Because they have the walkable neighborhoods and they have the, you know, the, the pro-social communities. I don't know.
Yeah.
We, we, I feel like.
So much anymore, though.
Yeah.
You know, they've, they've, so Europe has a lot of homogenized, homogeneous places. And, you know, I don't know how much you paid attention to what's happened the past decade with the European sovereign crisis. You know, they tried to put themselves together and they don't get along too well.
Yeah.
And they're also dealing with, with lots of, lots of tensions when they've had a lot of migration. And they're not dealing with it so well. So I don't idolize Europe in everything they do.
I know, for sure. We have our own migration issues that are ongoing and they're probably likely to be exacerbated with climate change.
Yeah.
And, well, gosh, there's so much, there's so much to.
Yeah, we can talk for hours.
Unpack here because what I'd really like to talk about is zoning and land use.
Sure, let's do it.
Because I feel like if we made allowances for people to change the configuration of their properties, you know, to subdivide it or aggregate properties and build something different. You know, like, it feels like, for, for one thing, the market really wants to build a lot more housing. Do, do we want it or not is another question.
When you say the market, you mean landowners just want to make money and developers?
Well, who else, who else makes houses besides developers?
Well, you say the market wants, there's two sides to every market. There's people who are trying to buy homes, people trying to sell homes, but.
Oh, sure, well.
I don't think we should always be slaves to the market.
Oh, for sure, yeah. Well, I meant, I meant the, yeah, I guess I mean both sides of the market because there's a very high demand, obviously, there always has been.
Yep.
And then, you know, the supply has been constrained for a long time. And anyways, maybe speak to that. Do you have any, do you have any sense? I'm all over the map tonight, sorry.
No, no, I love it.
Do you see any path towards market rate affordability in Boulder?
Absolutely.
Okay, what is it?
So there's, there's, one, we have very high land cost, right? But not everywhere. And there's a, there's a gradient, right? There's, there's the expensive places near the foothills and Mapleton. But then as you get out to East Boulder, land cost gets cheaper and cheaper. Yeah, you're not near the hiking trails, but I think as long as the, the city, and that's what I would work to do on council, is make sure that we have just as great amenities and services and access all across the city, in every neighborhood, including the new names, new ones we build. That's going to make the quality of life just as good, no matter where you live in Boulder. And that's what, that's what I'm committed to, so.
We don't all have to have dinner on Pearl Street, right? Like, I mean.
We can all have access to parks, we can all access to, you know, libraries, mass transit, all that good stuff.
Yeah.
So one, go where, location, size, quality, right? And amenities, that's what determines where a property is going to rent or sell for.
Yeah.
And then the construction cost is land, or the cost to produce is land cost, materials and labor, and all the other stuff, all the other stuff we add on. So, you know, I'm, I've been.
Climate friendly regulations, for example. Like, codes around insulating, for example.
Yes, exactly, which we recognize they have a cost.
Yeah.
But we're doing that for a reason.
Of course.
Right? But I meant more things like how we do affordable housing with the twenty-five percent, you know, inclusionary housing ordinance. So I, I watch planning board or city council when we congratulate ourselves for how much affordable housing this development is going to create via cash and loo, but then lament how expensive the market rate is. Well, the market rate is subsidizing twenty-five percent of units, making them more expensive. So that is a constraint to housing supply, market rate housing supply. So how do we get market rate? We zone for it. The, the value of land is going to be whatever the highest and best use you can develop on it. So if we say via our zoning, here's what we want and provide the positive incentives rather than the restrictions, we're going to get the housing we want at a more affordable price faster.
Okay, so where, where do you have in mind that this, this better zoning would, would take place?
BC one and BC two to start, that's where we're going to get the most bang for your buck.
What's BC one and BC two?
Business commercial one and two.
I see.
So these are the old, first of all, you know, we're doing the.
This is the East Boulder.
No, no, so this is Alpine Balsam, this is, this is the Meadows, this is Basemar. These are all our, our old seventies and eighties parking lots, shopping centers, right? Which are.
We got one right over here, that parking lots always have empty.
Yeah, so.
Easily.
That's a lot easier, it's one property, one owner, to imagine exactly where you want to live, right? Rather than a parking lot.
Yeah.
And it's easy to get done.
Is Table Mesa on that list, Table Mesa and Broadway? That, that sort of property?
Basemar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, no, that's baseline and Broadway, yeah. Table Mesa is one, one.
I'm sure it is, yes.
One mile south, yeah.
Yeah, I think those are, you know, inefficient, built for a different time and just ripe, ripe for a.
Well, you're speaking, speaking my language here, this is great.
So then the, the litmus test for everyone this election is, is what do you do about RL one and RL two?
Yeah.
And which is the single family neighborhoods. The, there's been a lot of misinformation spread that eighty-five percent of our land is single, single family home.
I think I've been, I think I've been spreading that misinformation.
That's incorrect, it's thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five percent of what, the entire city?
Yes.
Yeah, so this came up, someone asked me about this because I had, I had perpetuated that number on this podcast. And so I was actually going to, independent of this, make a note at the front end to say, hey, about this number.
So, yeah, I corrected the other candidate.
But I think the number, I think the number is, that, that I'm going for is the percentage of residential that's RL one.
Yeah, that's a fallacy as well, because we have lots of, you know, mixed use where commercial is, commercial and residential are allowed or reflects.
Then what's the number then, you know?
But it's thirty-five percent of our land is single, is own, single family. Then the idea that we are squeezing from a stone is just, just not correct. We have, so right now, the, all of, all of the mixed use and commercial, you can build residential there and we should, because that will address the jobs, housing balance. That's how we're going to get these great mixed use, walkable neighborhoods.
And one of the ideas is to take out commercial as you're doing it? Or it's just in addition to?
So, so the ones that are zoned pure commercial, we need to rezone for, for mixed use or residential.
I see.
But that's what we're working on, the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, which is sixty percent done. What I do think we need to protect, and this is always the challenge with mixed use, is our, our light industrial. Because we need our, you know, our car mechanics, our, our stuff like that. And we can't, we can't have those all go out of town because then we'll be driving out for services. So that's the thing, that's, we need to manage that wisely.
Yeah.
And there's a, there's some intricacies to the zoning where if there is a residential contiguous with an industrial and you could, then you can rezone that to residential. So it's kind of like this, I don't know what the dig dug effect, remember Dig Dug, the video game?
Yeah.
So where it just kind of, the current zoning allows this eating away into our industrial zones and we need to, we need to put a pause on that.
Yeah.
So RL one and RL two, other candidates have mentioned build on transit corridors, which, which actually makes no sense because, you know, there's some, there's some RL one on transit corridors like Broadway and Iris, where it's inappropriate to have single family homes on, maybe it was twenty years ago, but on essentially what feel like racetracks. And what people end up doing is just putting up walls. So you should have apartment buildings there, but there are RL one. So you would need to actually create a new zoning for those, not just change RL one. RL one.
So you're, right now, you're kind of implicitly pushing back on the notion of changing RL, are all RL ones?
No, 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 I'm saying.
I didn't quite follow.
The other candidates don't really know what they're talking about. In, in saying that we need to build on transit corridors by changing RL one. No, you, you need to create new zoning along transit corridors, right? To allow a more appropriate form of housing that will slow traffic down, create more possibly retail opportunities, more biking. RL one is different, that's this place.
Yeah, right.
Right? And.
I'm, I'm having this little trouble following along though. So what, so what you are saying though is that if there was an RL one on a transit corridor, it would be appropriate to rezone that?
We would need to change the zoning from RL one to something else.
Yeah, so, yes.
Not change the RL one zoning.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what, I think that's what I tried to ask.
Yes, exactly.
So, yeah, and, and so when you, so, so in that sense, building along transit corridors makes perfect sense.
Absolutely, just doing that, we need to.
Okay, so what was the thing that was nonsensical? I, I, like, I felt like you were being clever with words.
No, 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 because these are precise things, right? That we need, if we actually want to make change, we knew, we need to know how to do it.
Right.
Right? And it, it means changing the zoning, not rezoning rather than changing what the RL one zoning says.
Sure, okay.
Cleave those off from RL one zoning and then address RL one and RL two separately.
Yeah, and so then you were getting around to like the litmus test for RL one and RL two, not next to transit corridors.
Yes.
What do you do with that? So what do you do with that?
We need to, so first of all, rather than going for the jugular.
Yeah.
And scaring people and doing things like bedrooms are for people, quite frankly.
Okay.
You kind of know that we're not going to bulldoze your single family home. You want to live in your single family home, that's fine.
Forever.
Yeah, and also what, what they've done in other cities like Minneapolis, they had, where they got rid of single family zoning, they have form-based codes, so people know what to expect.
Yeah.
So what, what we need to have is predictable, gradual change, which is going to preserve neighborhood character. People bond into a certain neighborhood because they like it. You may not like it, but you talk to most people and they say, okay, this house, it's, you know, you could either fit, I don't know, a much bigger house here for, for a couple, or you could put a duplex here with an attached wall.
Yeah.
And allow twice as much housing.
Right.
Wouldn't change neighborhood character at all, probably allow more families and kids to live here.
Parking becomes a little more stressful in some neighborhoods, perhaps, not this one.
I don't know. That's a lot, that's a lot less, two families is a lot different from ten kids with ten cars.
Yeah.
So I, I would much rather have a discussion about let's, let's, our, our affordable neighborhoods, which are very attractive to families and walking to schools, let's get more families in there.
All right, so let's, let's move to bedrooms are for people. Let, let me take just a quick break and get a light. I've got a little, I got a little camping light, I'm going to set up.
Oh, cool.
All right, so I think, I think it's fair to, or just to ask, make a case against bedrooms are for people.
Okay, so. If it, so what I consider immoral, objectionable is that someone could face eviction for sleeping in a bedroom. So if it, if it, if I'm on council and it doesn't pass, that's the first thing I'm going to address. If it passes, I'm going to do, and I'm on council and would immediately address the unintended consequences, which are, because we talked extensively about CU's failure to house their insatiable growth of student population, it's caused enormous stress on certain neighborhoods. So living across from me, across the street from me is an illegally over, over occupied, single family home, they're my best neighbors. But we got to recognize that certain neighborhoods are under high stress by the students. And I know four developers in town, two out of state investors, who are ready to act immediately to go into all these, what, what the last remnants of our affordable neighborhoods are.
So that's one thing I wanted to challenge. Do we have, do we have last remnants of affordable neighborhoods?
Well, we're three, well, we're three years ago, well, we're three years ago.
Yeah, to me, it feels like that ship sailed a while ago.
Well, we'll see, I think there, you know, there's a, a lot of things have gotten expensive, like used cars because there's a lot of supply disruptions and who knows whether this will settle down, right? The lumber prices went through the roof and now they're back down. So and there's a lot of internal migration, we'll see, see where that settles. But any case, on the more affordable side, where someone could hope to be able to buy, they're going to get replaced by what are effectively boarding houses. So one can say, oh, who cares? We can house more students or young people. But it's, it's a value judgment about, I want to have housing which can meet the needs of every income level and for people's entire, entire lifespan, right? From when they're young and student or just starting out, to when they want to start a family and then when they want to retire, right? So it's about, and also I'm not fetishizing homeownership, but it's just going to create more, you know, single unit rental housing, which we have, we know how to create and we're doing a lot of it. And we think we've oversupplied that the past decade relative to the missing middle. So the other thing, the other thing, on a relative basis. So the, and we wouldn't have this problem if CU would have built their own housing. So I did my research and I've looked at all these investment properties on the hill, Martin Akers and Goss Grove. And what's going on there is you walk in, you tour, and they give you the wink, wink, nod, nod that, oh yeah, there's four people on the lease, but you can get nine thousand a month. Because you look around and all these, all these like substandard bedrooms built that people, that students live in, and yeah, they.
So you're saying they're getting nine thousand now?
Yes, there's some small risk premium because they're illegal and those rents will go up once they're legalized. And then, so I had some, talked to some developer and it's twenty-five thousand a bedroom. It's a cost to add another bedroom for him, which at a thousand, twelve hundred a month, you're going to make it back in two years, that's a, you know?
That's assuming, that's assuming you can reconfigure the existing structure, not adding on new structure.
They're going to do both. No, so, so this house, they'll, they'll scrape it and build the maximum FAR, put ten, twelve bedrooms in here with ten, twelve cars. Other places where they're either landmarked or historic, or it's more cost effective to just add a bedroom or six, they'll do that. So I don't, I, I, I think it'll actually increase the stock of, of certain types of housing units at the cost of housing units that we're so desperately missing.
Well, so I'm confused because you said that we've built too much, you know, micro apartment, you know, one bedroom apartments.
No, I don't say we, on a relative basis, we haven't built too much of anything.
We haven't built too much of it, so we're, we're kind of short supplied in all, in every direction.
Well, okay, so.
Maybe we have enough.
Well, listen, we're, we're, we're a, we're a, through the location we're in, people have discovered skiing over the past thirty years and thoughtful planning and a robust, diverse economy with, with healthcare, high tech, education, government jobs. It's a very desirable place to live, so relative to a lot of other places in the country. People are always going to want to move here, right? So it's, it's, when you say we haven't built enough, we'll never, we're never going to be able to build enough. We just have to build, build what suits the needs of our community to build a welcoming, diverse community and to provide housing for, as I said, across people's lifetimes and across the income spectrum. Because that's the kind of community I want to live in.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, one of the things I like about the walkable neighborhood I mentioned before is, is you can retire into it without feeling isolated if you can't drive anymore, for example.
Yep. Well, and a place like this might be too big for someone who wants to downsize.
I want to be able to downsize and have a place to go.
And if you had two shared places here, you could share utilities, share grocery runs, all that stuff, so.
So the, the question I, well, so, so one of the things I wanted to ask about the theoretical, maybe it's not theoretical, the real investor who wants to pay whatever, I mean, I don't know if Zillow.
Twenty-five thousand a bedroom?
I don't know if Zillow is correct in, in what this house is worth. But, you know, they want to come in and buy, I mean, what's the median price of a single family home in Boulder is one point something?
Yeah, so that's half below, half above, and there's a lot that are way above.
Yeah, right. And so, so let's just say you're going to, you're going to, so an institutional investor looks at that and they say, oh, that's a slam dunk, a million dollars, we'll turn that into ten, twelve bedrooms and make boatloads of money. That's, is that the claim you're making or am I misrepresenting?
No, so that's less of institutional investor, that's going to be the local guys. Because the institutions, they want to, they want to build bigger projects, right? So it's.
Yeah, I think of like, I have a small account and fund rise.
The rev, yeah, oh yeah, fund rise, stuff like that. But it's more, it's more the, you know, insurance companies and pension funds and things like that. insurance companies and pension funds and things like that. So what they would look at here is, okay, everything's bank-financed, and a bank will lend against what you can legally build there. So if you can build a single family home, you're going to generate a certain amount of rents. If we change occupancy, say, you can rent however many bedrooms you want. They're going to pencil in ten, twelve bedrooms and the bank, instead of saying, okay, this is a single family home, it should rent for this much, they're going to say, okay, you can, this is going to rent for fifteen thousand a month. Ten bedrooms, twelve bedrooms, so it's going to unlock all this development. So I mean, that's why I said I'm for, I'm for facts and solutions, not slogans. Bedrooms are for people is a great slogan, but it's just ignoring the economic realities.
So unpack this for me a little bit more, because you started off by saying that evicting somebody for living in a bedroom feels immoral to you.
Yep.
Is immoral to you. So you're, you'd like to reform it in which, how would you like to do the reform?
Oh, so people, whatever we have now, legal. Grandfather, but I think we actually need to go and look for, what I saw there was some pretty unsafe living conditions with health and safety and fire card violations that it's just a recipe for disaster.
I don't think bedrooms are for people addresses that at all, like in terms of like, there would be nothing that would keep us from, for example, going into a house and saying, hey, these bedrooms aren't really code of conduct.
Because the city has pulled back on enforcement because of this battle that's been going on for years. Because they really had, they really, if you look at the data, there haven't been evictions other than for real cause.
Well, I think that's actually an argument for bedrooms are for people is the fact that it's been arbitrarily enforced and it's really unfair to people who.
I think it's unfair, I think it's unfair to neighbors who, when there is a, students not being good neighbors and the onus is put on their neighbors on the hill to constantly call in nuisance complaints and have the police go, really, my philosophy, my philosophy is that CU hasn't housed their students, so they should have students sign the same residential code of conduct that they would adhere to if living in a dorm, if they're going to live in a neighborhood. Because I don't want police harassing students, it should be academic discipline. So what should we do? We should do exactly what city council tried to negotiate with the bedrooms people when they wanted to change the ballot measure, and I would have supported that. So I want to do things which are actually going to create affordability and not just benefit developers and landlords, right? So no scrapes to build boarding houses. If you want to add bedrooms, you got to make it affordable, that'll get me where I want to go. And I actually think that actually create more affordable housing opportunities and not just, you know, benefit people who want to make money off of it.
So is there anything about the way that bedrooms are for people is written now that prevents you adding safeguards to, to the measure?
Yeah, the way they went about it, right? And that's not how we should do politics in this town, we should talk to each other, listen to each other. I understand they feel like they got mistreated by Tom Carr, but you know what? I've talked to many bedrooms.
He's the city attorney.
Yeah, I've talked to many bedrooms volunteers and they agree with me, so.
They agree with you on what, on what part?
Where we need to get to in the end.
Oh, I see.
And they hate the process and they feel like, you know, we feel so defeated and we're close to the finish line, we just got to get it through, and I respect them for that, because it's been a, it's been a bad process and I would hope the city doesn't engage in this way. And I'm for, I'm for conversation and making progress together, so. I feel like if I were on council, it wouldn't have gotten to this point.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, you know, when I think about why I like bedrooms are for people, like I mentioned.
I like the slogan, it's a good slogan.
Yeah, well.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so you were contrasting slogans with people who do, and I actually feel like it does something that's really practical and useful, it's not just a saying, it's actually going to change the city, and you think it's in a bad way.
In a bad way.
Yeah, so I think it's more than a slogan, it's actually like a real policy.
No, no, it's a good slogan, but if you look at what it actually does, if you do the math on it, if you look at the actual impacts, it's bad.
I was just contrasting it with, with saying stuff versus doing stuff, but yeah, anyways.
I feel like the arguments that they.
I think it's really kind of a sad commentary on Boulder that in the last few years, whatever housing we've added has been sort of overrun by the demographic trend that allows the population to keep decreasing. So we've had, we've had a decreased population.
That's also not true.
Yeah, it totally is true.
No, it's not, you want me to get the census data out?
Well, maybe not the last three, but, because I don't know, I don't know twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, we've, population increased, not as much as Louisville Superior, but we had a population increase.
That's the, that's the twenty twenty census data that came out.
Yeah, happy to, yeah, we did decrease, here.
Well, Gary Walkner was super excited because Boulder's population had decreased three years in a row.
Let me, let me just get the real data for you and we have a discussion about facts. Okay. Okay, population is a hundred and eight thousand. Population grew eleven percent over the past ten years and grew three percent over the previous decade. So when they say we're losing people, they just don't have their numbers right.
I think, I think the peak population was a hundred and nine thousand in twenty sixteen.
So.
And so we've actually decreased the last few years, which is what I was trying to say.
Okay, you're right then.
Yeah.
I don't know the yearly, but I'm just going by the census data.
Yeah, and I feel like, you know, I don't, I don't have the numbers for the number of units that have gone in since twenty sixteen, but yeah, so. My commentary was based on, was based on those facts.
So base effects, okay.
But what I want to say is, is like, we have this demographic trend where people live in large houses by themselves.
Yep.
One or two people, and we have lots of empty bedrooms throughout the house, throughout the city. And it does seem funny to me that, that we actually disallow people from living in those bedrooms. Unless, unless you're in, you know, kind of a sanctioned family situation, so. And, and I think one of the kind of knee-jerk reactions people have in the language that you're using is that, you know, we need, we need to treat traditional families as they've been, you know, as they've been, you know, sort of favored in.
Not at all.
In the, in the occupancy restrictions, for example.
So let's go back to what I said initially, there's an illegally overoccupied house across the street from me and they're my best neighbors, so I would welcome bedrooms in my neighborhood, bedrooms are for people in my neighborhood. I'm just concerned that we have to recognize what is the driver of this specific issue in our town and it's CU. So let's eliminate the hill, Goss Grove and Martin Akers.
Oh, from, from that?
Yeah, from this, let's do a zoning overlay, I welcome in my neighborhood, I love, you know.
And then, so do, so do, again, the guardrails are specific places throughout the city.
Which are already at a tipping point.
Which are already a tipping point. So, well, so one question I have about those, those areas, is that even going to change for them? Like if they're already at full occupancy illegally.
Yep.
Doesn't it just legalize the occupancy and then things stay the same? Or the concern is really that people go into Martin Akers, scrape a home, put ten and twelve bedrooms up?
So there are certain, there are certain investors who have made big plays on the hill. I think they think there's going to, this whole town's going to turn into a Google or, and then they're going to sell them in ten years for much higher, but in the meantime, they are illegally and eventually legally going to be adding as many bedrooms as they can to maximize their income. It's not occurring in other neighborhoods, just these very specific neighborhoods where, let's pay attention to facts on the ground, you know, if you want to, I agree, if this were a normal community without, without the pressures of a college right there, it'd be a very different discussion in North Boulder.
Because then it's more about the, you know, favoring traditional families over.
We don't do that, that's another fallacy, like you can go, and I think in Colorado, it's, if you go on four dates, you're a common law married and you can go, you can go to the city. We don't prize traditional families all, we have a very broad definition of a family, you just go to the city and get a permit, so that's another fallacious argument being.
I've never heard of a family permit.
Or, sorry, domestic partnership.
Domestic partnership, well, yeah, okay. So you're saying like you want people to have to go through that to be able to live together?
No, I don't, but I'm saying it's not, it's not currently a barrier, right?
I don't think that's right, I think that's the whole reason that out Boulder is endorsing bedrooms are for people is that it, there is a significant barrier to people who want different configurations than what has been traditional families.
So if, if they say that, I'll take their word for it, and that's not, like I said, I don't prize any family structure over another, in my neighborhood, I would welcome it. I'm just concerned about the facts on the ground in certain neighborhoods.
Certain neighborhoods, okay, so, did we want to review the list of safeguards that you would like to see with bedrooms are for people? So we talked about specific neighborhoods would be exempted or have a safe, yeah.
Specific neighborhoods, to make sure it's actually creating affordability and not just benefiting developers and landlords and then monitoring and preventing, you know, scrapes and building boarding houses, which are just doing CU's job for them rather than actually creating more housing.
So one of the, one of the thought exercises I have is like, are there any, are there any properties like on the hill, for example, that would otherwise be affordable if bedrooms are for people didn't go into effect? Like, I mean, sometimes I just wonder, like, when you, when you make this argument, if you're really just arguing about which wealthy people own these houses?
No, so why, why do you think the cap rates on the hill are like sub-three percent? Right, because there's anticipation, we're just going to build more and more bedrooms and eventually sell to those wealthy people, but there, there's also some older homes, homes on smaller lots, smaller homes, right, which, like we said, we started the conversation, there, there, there needs to be a broad spectrum of affordability for every income level, so we can build a diverse welcoming community that people of all family structures and all ages can stay in. So maybe it's not affordable, like sixty percent of AMI, but with mortgage rates at two and a half percent, a dual-income family can afford that with a mortgage, especially places like Martin Akers and places like that. And also have, have to have, you know, there's, there's another concern for the, the neighborhoods where, let's be honest, CU has not managed their students well. We had just had a riot on the hill with zero consequences for any student. I've heard no suspensions, no expulsions, and there's a lot of friction being generated and I fear that increasing the number of student housing on the hill would only serve to make things worse. But my neighborhood, I would absolutely welcome it.
Totally, well, and I, yeah, I appreciate your perspective on that.
But I'm confident that as long as we elect the right people at city council, we're going to end up in the same place. Meaning if it passes, we'll fix it, if it doesn't pass, we'll get it done.
I see, yeah, well, so yeah, that's great. I, I have mixed feelings about you saying that, you know, like, I don't want, I don't want boarding houses everywhere either, right? And certainly I don't want the ten to twelve cars and it feels inappropriate for this neighborhood, so.
Well, you don't want ten to twelve cars anywhere.
I don't, yeah, you're right, I, I'm all about carlight living and figuring out how to make that work, so.
I mean, do you appreciate how some people who moved here and sent their kids to the neighborhood school wouldn't want twelve people living on this lot with twelve cars?
I, I can, yeah, so, like you said, if it passes, you'll fix it.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, you'll, you'll take, you'll take care of it.
So we agree.
I think we do, I, I, I may regret this tomorrow, I'll be thinking, I'll be doing some armchair quarterbacking of like, well, I should have said, should have said this or that, but.
Well, give me a call, happy to talk more about it.
So, I mean, I know in particular, lives in a house with ten or twelve people.
Sure, that's not a choice that most people would want to make though, I respect that some people want to make that choice.
It's a co-housing arrangement.
Sure.
I feel like as a society, we ought to think about more pro-social living arrangements than the traditional family living by themselves in a, in a large house. And I really respect that, that co-housing arrangement he has. I'm curious to know now if there's ten to twelve cars outside that house and how that works and whether or not.
I don't know, I've never been to this house.
Yeah.
No, but I'll tell you my, my, my ideal, when I lived in, you know, I lived in New York and I lived, you know, in a strip of row houses and sat on my stoop and hung out with my neighbors and.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Went to the one corner of the coffee shop, the other corner was a park, and that was my ideal, so.
Well.
That was very pro-social.
So here's, here's the way I was going, and that is, if someone came and scraped this house and put ten to twelve bedrooms in there and then put ADUs in the back, I think that would be great, if it's kind of like what you described as a boarding house where it's like ten micro condos essentially and everyone has a car. That sounds pretty horrible, especially if they're all, you know, students. I mean, I, I love students and I've met a lot of really nice people at CU.
Yeah.
Our whole economy, not our whole economy, but a large part of our economy is driven by students, so we should welcome them and make them feel at home.
We just got to house them.
Yeah, we should house them, but yeah, maybe I don't want ten, twelve students right here on this lot.
This is also why I think this is a, not a productive conversation for the city to be having, right? You want great new walkable neighborhoods.
Yes.
Right, you want to create more housing.
Yes.
So do I. But instead, we are, you know, because the whole nation's talking about single family zoning, we have to talk about it here, even though, how many, what are the numbers? How many new bedrooms is it going to create realistically? Do you think?
Bedrooms are for people?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were talking about a single family zone.
No, no, bedrooms are for people.
I don't know, I know that a lot of, I know that a lot of.
Couple hundred, maybe?
Well, I guess, I guess one thing.
Do you think people who live in those big single family homes, who, like two people who live in a four thousand, five thousand square foot home would be like, oh, let's, I'm going to start renting out all my extra bedrooms?
I wish they would, is actually the truth, yeah, I wish it was legal for them to do that, honestly.
No, no, even if it was legal, they wouldn't do it.
We don't know that, it's been illegal for fifty, sixty years, we've totally normalized people living by themselves in large houses.
Okay.
We have, I mean, like, and we, we say, you want to, you want to change the configuration of your house?
I'd like to, I think.
We don't, we actually don't know, because we've, we've normalized our, our culture around not doing that sort of thing.
Fair point, fair point.
And literally, when, when you, when you do the thought exercise, people just say, well, you can't do it anyways, it's illegal.
Fair point, but I think, I mean, back to my original point was like, let's focus and target where people agree, get excited, have great ideas and have buy-in, rather than just causing a scuffle that's not going to actually generate much housing.
Time out, so I did a lot of petitioning for bedrooms are for people and one of the things I, that I came in with a prejudice of what I expected, the kinds of people I expected to interact with.
Yep.
You know, like the people that would be for it. And I was blown away by the wide variety of different people that came and signed the petition and had their different wide variety of reasons, I actually feel like there's really wide support.
You know what, I just don't think it's such a big issue for the town, it's not going to create a lot of housing, it's just a lot, much ado about something which should have changed a long time ago, let's get a change and move on to actually new, exciting stuff.
I mean, that's, that's great, let's, I mean, so I'm on, I'm kind of on that, on the same page with you, like I feel like it's like step one and maybe you feel like it's like it wasn't even worth doing, but I feel like it's.
No, 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 it's more heat than light, should have been done properly four years ago. The fact that it's gotten to this point, I think it's wasted a lot of people's times, including you heading to go out and get signatures, so I'd like to.
Okay, well, cool, let's, 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 let's make sure this, this passes and we'll fix it as needed.
Or let's not pass it and then fix it.
Well, you can understand why I'd be super skeptical based on what happened last year with the city attorney screwing them over and how, how often this issue's been punted down the road.
I feel your pain.
I have no faith that we can, like, and what's crazy to me about it is like.
Have faith in me, Philip.
Yeah.
I'm all about, listen, I'm all about bringing the community together, and from what I hear of the people who are opposed to it, and what I hear of the people who are for it, right? They basically agree, like, and we can get to the right place as long as we don't do the politics of personal, personal destruction, you know, you said you went in with a lot of prejudice, where did you get that prejudice from? Why'd you have that prejudice?
Well, yeah, prejudice can be negative for sure and I, yeah, I assume that the people. Yeah, I assume that the people that would be, excuse me, behind bedrooms are for people, like the people that would sign it would all be young people, for example.
Yep.
And that's just.
Old people aren't all bad.
Yeah. We walk through life with all kinds of assumptions about demographics and whatnot. And I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be proven wrong That lots of people are behind bedrooms are for people, you know, that has very, very wide, very wide appeal. Cool. Well, yeah, David Adamson and I have talked about this issue a lot because You know, I, he was sort of like, why, why should we spend energy on this when there's all this other work to do that we could be doing?
I knew David's a smart guy.
And that, that, I can see that. And I've, I kind of feel the same way in the sense that I hope we get this taken care of. We reform the occupancy restrictions, which are, you know.
I mean, look, we spent an hour of this conversation talking about something with very little impact.
Well, to you and to me.
No, no, in terms of what else we could be doing, it's a couple hundred bedrooms for people who aren't really getting evicted anyway. And we could have just legalized it with the proper restrictions and not gotten the whole town upset about it.
Yeah, that sounds good. I, I would just, I would just go back to the fact that You weren't on past city councils. I can't give you.
Things haven't been, things haven't been working well.
I can't give you grief about.
Our conversation's broken. Not our conversation, but the conversation in town. And we got to fix it.
I can't give you grief about What past city councils have failed to do. I do, you know, given, given the, you know, I'm still learning about city politics. I have this sort of preconception that Plan Boulder might endorse you. Have they come out with their endorsement?
They did. They wrote me something very nice, actually.
And they endorsed you?
Yeah.
Yeah. I feel like they've endorsed a lot of City council members who punted on this particular issue that they could have taken care of.
My own person.
Well, that's great. Tell me about the kickoff party and you were saying earlier that you had people from Boulder progressives.
Not from Boulder progressives. No, 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 no.
I'm sorry. Who did you say were talking with each other?
Oh, so, so I think, you know, I interviewed with the coalition. I think a lot of the groups Were very interested in me. Boulder progressives were not because I think they, they like to, they want to defund the police and overturn the camping ban, Which I think is a very unpopular position in this town and also not the wisest policy for our town. But Better Boulder, you know, because of my.
Better Boulder, sorry.
Better Boulder, which is the group formed by the chamber, My extensive experience and commitment to housing, transportation, all the things they, they stand for, they're very interested in my candidacy. For, for reasons you can read about in the press release, they didn't end up moving forward. So, but a lot of them came to my, to my kickoff party.
Yeah.
A lot of people who weren't involved in, in politics at all and a lot of people from Plan Boulder. And I heard a lot of great conversations with people who.
Haven't talked to each other.
Haven't talked to each other a long time and they thought, maybe they had stereotypes about each other. Maybe they fought battles, you know, Maybe these same sort of battles, but that just inspired my heart that we can make progress. So. Although, yeah, I'm, I'm endorsed by Plan Boulder. I think I deserve to be endorsed by Better Boulder. You know, because.
Because you're in line with their values.
Everyone has the same values. It's just about finding the solutions and I want to find them.
Yeah, cool. Well, that sounds like a closer to me if you want to be done with this nonsense.
I really enjoyed our conversation.
I did too. Thank you for taking time.
Sounds like we can do some great stuff.